Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Morning, everyone. Glad to see all the chipper faces here. Uh, we'll start by approval of last meeting's minutes. Do we have any additions or directions to make to the minutes? We'll do the background. Motion is second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion is carried. Next item is bills. Does everybody had a chance to look over those? Any questions?
We'll do a quick damn list.
Second. Okay. Motion is second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Both same sign.
Roll call.
Oh, roll call. Sorry, I was trying to move us along. Sorry. Keeping me on it.
Brown.
Aye.
Hulk.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Light fun.
Aye.
Wakefield.
Aye.
I have financial reports.
We are.
I just like to hear it. Good. Any questions on the financial reports? Yeah, good. Motion is second to approve the financial reports. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion is carried. Treasurer's debt.
Right there. Candy on the bridge.
Yes.
Kind of more than usual.
Yeah, it was. Refund, like, just refunds from.
The out-of-markets.
Yeah. Yeah, there you go.
My motion made too.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve treasurer's checks. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion is carried. Uh, we'll move on to the agenda and Candy, you had a petition to make on our new business?
Yes. Homestead credit. Actually, on our desk.
Okay, so uh, all we need to do is amend the agenda to include a homestead credit on the new business. Is there anything else that we need to add to the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
A motion in a second to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion is carried. Extension, welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, a little password, but roundup recap. We haven't got a chance to do that yet, so here we are. We had three hundred participants on Tuesday and two hundred and fifty on Wednesday, down a little bit due to the weather and fun times coming blizzards we've had this year. But because. It's been wonderful. Um, overall, the program went really well. Those who couldn't make it, we were able to zoom them in. And even though, you know, it's not our preferred method to communicate, but still made it, may it happen. Um, last year's virtual roundup, there was comments that they appreciated the videos on YouTube. Um, so again, this year, we have most of the videos up on our YouTube channel, so you can find that in our Ramsey County extension page, and then there's a link to that or just uh, Google Link Reasing Extension Roundup on YouTube. To find all the channels or the videos. We have about thirty. Um, last week was my first pesticide training, private pesticide training um, meeting. Uh, we had about twenty-two participants, and I think that went really well with kind of doing a little bit more of a hands-on uh, approach to that. Next meeting for the pesticide certification is March twenty-ninth, around six to nine in the morning. And then we're also working on preparing for our four-H mini-camps. One of the mini-camp that'll be new this year will be a crop-studying mini-camp. Um, so we'll, I'll be putting that one together um, for June sixth, so kind of engaging interest to see if we can do like a crop-studying um, team for future years. So that is my report for my side of things this year.
Yes. Awesome. Just letting you know, our, our shooting sports program, uh, we just finished up our air rifle uh, lessons, and now we're moving on to archery these next two months. Um, got a full slate of, of kids participating. We did host the district match for air rifle. That last week, last weekend or weekend before? Weekend before. Yeah. Yeah, and then um, uh, it's, it's been kind of working uh, post-pandemic to kind of do what we call postal. So uh, we have kids that are local. There is a shoot at their home range, and then uh, get a lot of participants in Moore County, uh, some of the others. They were able to shoot at their home counties. We got a lot of those, a lot of their targets coming in on a daily basis. Um, so those scores are still coming in. Uh, we're gonna be hosting the state shoot uh, coming up in eight rolls. And then um, we've also got some uh, things going on with the schools and uh, public health. We got some nutrition education going on uh, with some of our elementary schools. Um, we're working with the culinary arts program at the Lake Erie Junior Tech. Uh, we're doing some cooking classes with them. Uh, we got a grant with the Beef Commission to do some uh, uh, multi-function cookery. And so we're having fun with that. We just started yesterday. Um, also, we got the leadership opportunities that uh, we're looking at for the future, so um, Lucas, I did, I did drop you a couple emails, so just want to check that out.
Can do.
Uh, and Adam was able to come to our performance reviews last week and visit with our district director. Dina, she was here, so we gave him a, a good picture of what we've been up to during the past year. Um, hope anybody has any further questions, talk to Adam. And um, I guess our last thing that we wanted to kind of talk about was just if you'd ever, if you guys have approached the, the mill levy on our conversation, uh, just to see if that's going on the next ballot, or just kind of wanted, you know, to get our advisory council prepared and.
Does your advisory council have a preference?
Well, we actually did meet last week on Thursday, and we just, you know, kind of gave them, gave them a background about it. Um, they're rearing to go, so I mean, they're um, whatever. They, they, I guess they would prefer not to go up against roads. Yes, that's our main thing. But whatever.
I think, I think splitting the two is sensible.
And in our performance reviews, and just talking with Dina too, she said that was kind of one of their thoughts of, of the whole system is they want to make sure that they split them so that they're not going up against each other essentially. Road versus, versus extension.
Yeah, there are some counties that are already going for the, for the June election.
Do you, do you feel prepared if it was a June election?
Um, you know, we do have, I think it would be just to know sooner, so we're, we're, for, we can get the loop from NDSU, but they're sending things out. So as long as we're getting into the loop pretty quickly, I think. You've entered one.
Candy, the last time you visited was ten years ago, is that correct?
I think so.
Correct. Yeah. And this mill levy is to maintain extension. We're not asking for more. It's just maintaining, we're not taking that.
And informing the public of that will be critical.
Exactly, yes. So we want to make sure that's where it actually is, using the word maintain.
Any questions, Sarah? You know that state shoot area there? Where are you guys hold that?
Down our, our usual shooting area downstairs. And that'll, I believe that'll be, that will be, yeah, there'll be more information on that.
Oh, and free orders, if anyone has to finish getting some last-minute free orders where they're due on Thursday, so if you want to come on up to our office and we'll get that in order for you guys.
Perfect. I guess I'll make mention performance reviews, but really, well, always interesting seeing all the things that the extension office does every year. And uh, I got to go to pesticide training with Lindsay for the first one, and we got to learn about bugs. I remember we got to learn about bugs at pesticide training before, so it was actually kind of fun. I got to learn something new. It was pretty informative, so.
Good. Uh, I'm sure you'll know when you're gonna be on the ballot in very short order.
Okay.
Um, but if your preference is June, then I'd say probably plan that you'll be on the ballot in June. It'll be my guess.
Okay. We're gonna talk about it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll talk about it, but that would be my, my guess is that if that's your preference, then that's probably the way to go. So.
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's, you know, so.
Sooner you get going, the better.
Yeah, very.
Okay, is there anything else for extension? Any questions? Anything else for you ladies?
We did everything.
Hi, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Kevin?
Okay, first thing, Johnson Electric has finished putting that new electrical panel on Webster. And the invoice is the same amount as their bid was. It's twenty-six hundred dollars, so the motion to pay that.
We have a motion in a second to pay Johnson Electric twenty-six hundred dollars. Uh, roll call, please.
Chris.
Aye.
Light fun.
Aye.
Hulk.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Okay, and then this is the time of year we usually set the rates for the blading contracts and hourly rates for the mortgage rates. Uh, last year, our summer contracts were two hundred and ninety dollars a mile and twenty-three-five dollars an hour for government work. And included a special sheet for the, for our actual cost for it, projected costs. So I guess my suggestion would be to raise it to three hundred dollars per mile and a hundred and forty dollars per hour for government work, a hundred and forty-five for private work. But we can talk about that.
A question on that, uh, Kevin. Just in looking at the year-over-year, we seem to bounce up and down. What do you attribute that to from more like, you know, five-fifty a year to like then six-thirteen or whatever? We're bouncing like, is it just because of fuel costs or things like that?
One year, we actually, because of the weather, uh, we missed the blading, so we're on like five days instead of six, so that really piked that one year, but.
I suppose the other year was expensive as well, but we got that really good fall. We probably got a seventh on some of them.
Yep, exactly. We don't stop either, so yeah, you're right.
Okay. That's kind of what I was thinking, but I just wanted to double check.
Fuel does have a big impact, but so you can factor the fuel costs into it. The wages and insurance and uh, that kind of stuff is pretty steady. Utilities go up once in a while, but.
And this is for six bladeings?
Right, well, this is the actual, oh, yeah, yeah, right, the contract part, yes, it is for six blades.
Three hundred, three hundred bucks for six, then is what we're looking at possibly.
And say you want to do more, they can contract.
I've been told that some of them didn't get, they got three.
Oh, three off the contract, or some of them only pay for three. Is that?
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah. You're talking townships, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Certain roads.
Certain roads will pay for three, some pay for nine on certain roads.
Yeah, Grand Arbor does, I think, twelve, and then up to eighteen on certain roads. City of Dallas Lake, they jumped theirs up to nine, ten, eighteen on railers, but on the traffic.
They almost need to find out what that township is. Right. Well, I think that's where people get frustrated because they think they're, well, why is my road getting later? Well, if your township's only paying for three or six, and the next one over's paying for twelve, I mean, they're paying for it.
Right.
They're taxing more than pay.
Well, that's how, that's how I phoned over to Hardaway because I had the same question, and I asked, well, what do we pay for that? Will we pay extra?
And we've got certain roads that they get new and they pay for nine blades just because we don't really get so much traffic compared to.
And there are some that are three, like uh, some driveways.
We got a couple maintenance, not maintenance, but really, you know, not real traffic, they get through.
Three times basically just keeps weeds, but I mean, you know, that's part of doing the maintenance is you want to get those weeds controlled. So if you have questions on that, I can show you the maps and, you know, and then if there's a problem, we can work on the problem.
I'll relay that along. I'll find out how many lanes are lined up for that.
Sure.
Do we have any other thoughts on the proposed cost increase? Need a motion for that, Kevin?
Yes, please.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to go up to uh, three hundred dollars a mile for our blading. Any further discussion?
Uh, part of that motion should be the hourly rate also.
And the hourly rate is what?
A hundred and forty for government and a hundred and forty-five for private.
Okay, with the add to the motion, is that all right, gentlemen? Uh, a hundred and forty for government, a hundred and forty-five for private. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion is carried.
Uh, next thing, uh, most of you probably heard by now that Silver Construction is going out of business. And they've got, at this point, they're just farming out their, so trying to sell their stuff. They're not having a sale or anything, so they've got older, older side dump trailer that they're trying to sell, and they ordered me sixteen thousand. I could probably get it for fifteen thousand. One thing that we don't have that we could probably use, you know, probably wouldn't get used a lot, but this is a small dollar ticket I am too, so.
Two axle?
Pardon me? Two axles? Three axles, the three axle. It is a manual, you know how you shut that gear to tip it one way or the other? That's manual, so it's, you know, not a big deal to get out and move that, but.
You don't know what year it is?
No, it's old. I did look at it, it seemed, the tires are spare, but other than that, it looks like it's in pretty good shape.
So they probably didn't use the side dump a whole heck of a lot since they were graveling. Most of the time we're using.
Right. When we're tearing out bridges, we're loading debris.
Yeah.
It would work good for that. We usually have to put it on a end dump and then tailgate has to be done, and we get it done, but.
I could see where it would be useful. Those things hold value forever. It doesn't vary. Fifty years old or something.
Probably what, two hundred grand?
Yeah, a really nice one. You could probably find a good one for thirty or forty.
Yeah, I wish I would have known about this. I would have bought it from all, from under you. So it might have.
We can delay this till next.
Go over to Silver's right now.
I think the price is right, to be quite honest with you. So they won't sit on that very long.
You'll hire one, eh?
I'll rent it back. It'll work. I'll make a motion. We go ahead and allow Kevin to spend up to sixteen thousand dollars.
A second. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion is carried.
And then also, this is the time of year we advertise for this, our gravel projects, Chip Sue project, Optics Toys, and Road Oil, so I'd just like a motion to go ahead and advertise.
Right.
Motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion is carried.
And also in March, our weight limit is usually going to affect.
No one are gonna, when they want to put that on?
No, no idea. It hasn't even started out west yet. Out west, they don't have any snow, so it's gonna start early out there, which we're gonna be, I'm three weeks behind them, but.
I'm just curious, you know, when I gotta start getting through that.
I'm just gonna guess about the third or fourth week in March, maybe the fourth or eighth week. I mean, and looking at weather forecasts, it's not really much, so.
Right? Yeah.
Yeah, we're usually, what, two weeks trailing probably on the.
We're usually two weeks on the west, but it's gonna be a little bit hotter this year because they never had snow all year. So I'm just looking for a motion to put those in effect the same time that the state puts theirs into effect. So moved.
Aye. A motion in a second to put load limits on when the state determines that it's the right time. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion is carried.
Now, also every year, we send a letter to the North Dakota Highway Control asking for their help in enforcing the limits. And we send the map along with it. Anyway, go over here.
Should have a motion to go ahead and send that letter in.
Motion to go ahead and send a letter to allow chairman to sign it.
Okay, a motion to, we have a second. Okay, we have a motion in a second to uh, send a letter to the North Dakota Highway Department to help with enforcing of our weight limits. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
You're brushing this cap right here.
Yep, that will be the spring load, spring load limits. Mark, are you saying it last year, all of them?
Uh, yes.
Eight, ten on all the newer builds and seven up to. End it.
Yeah. And just to head up, if there's a section of road or something that needs to be charged, that, that is a action of the commission. Okay, the, that approach, we talked about the approach on military road for that new cell tower that's going in. And he did get the approach moved a hundred and fifty feet further west. So I guess in my opinion, that, that'll work now there. So I guess uh, you guys, I don't know if you need to pull it.
They taking the other approach out or just adding one?
They're adding one, yes. And it'll be, it's gonna be not very tall.
They're putting the cullards and everything.
They're putting all, yeah, they, they'll, it's up to them to build it, put the cullards in, everything.
How far?
Who goes out and make sure that they're doing it correctly?
Yeah.
They're trying to take the next approach away.
It's about a hundred and seventy-five feet, which is pretty close, I'll say that. Both those approaches are, are low profiles. It's, it's not like it'd be launched, you know, they're, they're less tall. Maybe.
I just want to make sure they put a cullard in it so it doesn't hold water.
Yeah, it's right in the bottom of the ditch is new, and so.
Yeah.
I already mentioned that to them.
So they know there will be complaint.
Yeah, yeah. That'll be right in the permit that they have installed.
But I just want to make sure someone's going out there verifying it because I don't, you know, they try to sneak, everybody, they sneak things through usually.
Yeah. And they'll have a payment trail too. They need an actual permit, so. Part of the permit says if it's not done right, the county will do it and bill them. That's right in the permit.
What's the current approach there that, what, what's that used for there?
It's actually the service part of the Ammon Fish. It's not their main office actually. It's like their sheds or storage sheds that they're and their cold, cold storage equipment, like boats and stuff that they don't use in winter. They use that approach to get into there.
And the new one's gonna go into the AT&T tower, correct?
AT&T, yeah.
But it's not gonna be used a ton, basically?
No, that's why it'll be a lot lower profile.
They'll dive in every once in a while, the rest of it's running, right?
I thought that they'll probably only move the steel off it when they need to get in there for something, that type of thing.
If you don't have a problem with it, I guess, so, I mean, I'll make a motion to approve the permit. Okay.
We have a motion in a second to approve the permit for a new cell tower uh, access point on, off a military road. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion is carried.
I guess we'll actually, probably all those, please. Yeah, so Randy Kelly three, I threw random bits, that could be eleven. So I don't know if we'll see, we're gonna have to get on that, and I don't know if the state will have their notices back to you guys before the meeting on the fifteenth, but hopefully. Then Randy Kelly four, the box cover up there, so we talked to some of the suppliers, and it sounds like the materials and stuff are out, like labor day or later, so that's probably gonna need to have a, we should do a little bit of fall in here. Um, just to make sure that they can pay it back on. It's, I mean, you could put in the, you know, put in the box in the fall, but it'll be recognized then, but as far as getting the payment back on, it's a few thousand, so um, and then, you know, and the bit opening is currently, I mean, that may slide back a little bit with the environment, what we're still working through, um, before. So, but I guess the overturn available until then, I mean, it's a whole lot of difference. I just want to give you an update that those, I'm gonna push it back a little bit.
Those cullards poured offsite and then brought in, or they poured off?
Yeah, they're, yeah, this is, that's, it's made for gas. We put the shipment in sections and sent them on a crane, slide together, pull them up.
We could do it both ways. It were in place, but it takes much, much longer to install that way and a little more expensive too.
I was gonna say, if you can, you can pour it in, control the environment, bring it out, it's better anyway.
Way faster.
Way faster.
Yeah, it's, it's a little open much faster.
Yeah, and they're cheaper.
Kevin, you know, the last time you worked on that bridge, would you have a rough life together?
Yeah, it was in the sixties.
Sixties?
Yeah. That's on the.
It's a whole bridge.
Yeah. It's hit, what, fifteen tons, so yeah.
This one will last longer, right? This one will last longer?
Oh, yeah, this is gonna be a box over there.
Yeah.
You know, with those steel rainforests, and they last for a hundred years.
It's, yeah, the old bridge still has like railroad tie style headwalls and that stuff. It's, it's a really bad bridge. It's time for it to go.
Well, they'll save some money over the long run too with the inspections only every four years, so.
Right. Yeah, because it's fifteen tons, you know, it's a certain ton limit, then they have to inspect it more often.
Did we get, did we get everything squared around and handled?
Yeah, that is actually.
Everything's good?
Yeah. Hopefully, well, assuming the price is coming good.
Pardon me?
Assuming the bid price is coming good, that's how we.
We'll know how good it really is.
Yeah.
You anticipate a lot of bidders? Are they out looking for work or not?
A lot of landholders.
On the asphalt side.
Players are looking at it.
On the asphalt side, it's not, it's still confined contracting. That's part of the problem with the concrete. Uh, everybody, everybody is looking for box covers right now.
State adding up some money, right?
Yeah. Every state got.
Well, and it just seems like it's the way to go.
Yeah. The state got it all night.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, a little bit to maybe these suppliers of those precast box covers to prepare a, of, of this mark, and then Hancock to for the end, so.
That's the thing, that the Minnesota's bidding them, and the South Dakota's bidding them, and all that type of thing.
Yeah.
Aye, man.
We're in the wrong business.
Right now, yeah. She'd be holding a precast concrete probably.
Okay, was there anything else?
Nope.
Perfect, thank you so much. Mr. State's attorney.
Morning. Good morning, man. We'll go over there, or maybe I'll. You're. Um, we did interviews for our open positions. We had three qualified applicants who interviewed for the legal assistant position. Two had legal backgrounds, uh, done their reference checks, talked to everybody. All of them are highly recommended. I'd like to go ahead and make an offer letter to name and see what, apparently works with child support, so I'm looking for approval on that. And then I would be offering at the minimum salary we talked about. And then I'd also need some direction on the assistant state's attorney. We had one applicant. He is a law student, uh, so he's not technically licensed. He does come very highly recommended, though. He got a personal letter of recommendation from the Grand Forks County State's Attorney. That's a bigger office, so that's a little bit harder to come by. He has a good academic record. Standard practice would be to offer him a temporary contingent offer, hire him as an intern until he passes the bar exam. It would be at the end of July is when they take that. I think it's a, a good ad. I think we should go for it, but I want to see what you all think.
Did you interview him?
I did. We interviewed him. He is a strong candidate. He's Canadian, so he's used to cold weather. He's. Go ahead.
Gotta warm up.
Is he UND law?
UND law. He's in the top twenty-five percent of his class. He has a lot of civil experience. He actually got hired on in Grand Forks with the Grand Forks County State's Attorney's Office to do their road manual, and they liked it so much that they. And they liked it so much that they hired him again to do criminal stuff after the fact. So that's really appealing to me, that not only did he get the job once, he got the job twice. So. And he's, uh, you know, he's super familiar with the civil portfolio. He's really interested in practicing in rural practice. And.
So it said to graduate in May?
Yep, so he'll graduate in May, bar exam this summer. And then his start date would roughly be August sometime on a kind of a contingent basis until he passes. Usually they find out around Labor Day. So we'd have to gut it out a little bit longer, but I think he'd be a good fit in the office.
Did you give us a name?
Nicholas Equisto.
Again?
D A C. Q U I S T O. And, uh, I, I believe that we should make a contingent offer at the lowest advertised rate, which would be sixty-six thousand five hundred and sixteen. Then if he passes the bar and a successful probation period of six months, I recommend five, ten. That's a pretty standard across the board for new attorneys.
And how long has this position been advertised and opened?
It started, uh, mid-November.
Okay.
We had one interview before. It, it wasn't quite the right fit. We had a couple of other people who were interested, but didn't submit all of their application materials. And. It's a little bit of slim pickings right now, but that being said, I think this would be a good find and a good ad for Ramsey County. He's young, he's enthusiastic. He wants to get in there and start doing some stuff. That's exactly the type of attitude.
Well, I mean, from, from your perspective, does it, you're willing to wait and put the additional workload on the office and so we can get that right or something?
My, my thoughts are if we were not to hire him, nothing would change. But if we do give him the offer, uh, we know that a little bit of reprieve is coming down the road. And it's very common practice for people to try and arrange a job before they graduate.
Well, I, I think it's, I think it's reasonable, it's positive that he's got county experience, one, but two, yeah, he's out there already knows what he wants to do and he looks for what he's looking for. That's good.
You see, sorry, go on. He'll stop looking probably for another job. And that's also something to be considered. Sooner we can lock him up, that's, you know, good for us because he is, like I said, he's smart. He's motivated, he's highly recommended. If we don't hire him, somebody will.
Well, I think you can add to that, that you could be potentially advertising for this position until Labor Day. So that's why you got the year probationary period too, you know, if it doesn't work out.
It don't look like the workload's been slowed down.
I think we're right on par. I see the court reports in the back of the room. She could probably tell you a little better than I could. Last year we came in at eight hundred and ninety-nine new criminal cases. That doesn't include recations, juveniles, traffic. So we need help and I think it's a good way to go about it.
I think we do, we have motions.
I agree. I think I'd like a motion for the legal assistant.
Oh, okay.
Okay, the motion gives second.
I'll say.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to hire a legal assistant and what was the salary again? Okay.
I might add that when Jared Dickens on our engineers convention, he did a good presentation about the, the booklet he was working on. You seem very knowledgeable. It's very, very intelligent.
He's a charpooter. Um.
Talked to a group of about four hundred people, I think, in the audience.
No problem, huh?
Yeah.
What was that salary there?
Uh, for Nancy Watt, I would do a four thou, or not four thousand, forty thousand, two hundred and four eighty, that was our minimum advertised. I think the offer I would say.
Well, do, do we wanna make the motion essentially to offer at that number and then allow the state's attorney the latitude to, to angle the book, basically?
Well, within, within the range.
Within the range of salary?
That's perfect.
Yeah, we agree.
Okay, uh.
We need to double check that for a bit of the stuff. Yeah.
I can work with Brian and, you know, offer letter together by the end of the week.
Just so we.
Just so it meets that.
Yeah, so we're on track. Yeah.
So you don't make an offer and all of a sudden we're in a middle and now we're abtracted.
Yeah, I mean, as long as it's within that range, I think anywhere in there is fine. Just figure out the number that works and it'll be okay. So it'll be good. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both same sign? Motion is carried.
I guess I'll make the motion to allow the state's attorney to, uh, extend a contingent offer to the candidate, uh, for the assistant state's attorney shop.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to, uh, extend an offer, uh, to Mr. Nicholas. Remember his last name already? Not gonna try to remember his last name.
Listy.
At some point I'll learn it, I'm sure, I'm big knows. Uh, and what was that dollar amount?
Uh, starting as sixty-six, five sixteen.
Okay.
And again, I'd like the.
With the, with the same latitude and ability for those things to angle it maybe.
Okay. Further discussion on that? All those in favor of extending that offer signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign? Motion is carried.
That's all I had. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. You did good work. Well, how does that, uh, eight ninety-nine base, uh, compared to like previous year? Have any ideas?
Uh, I'd turn it over to the clerk of court.
I don't have the numbers on me, but I believe it's lower than pre-COVID, but higher than before.
Great.
That being said, the number is kind of a nebulous number because the types of crimes are a little more sophisticated.
I think, I think.
And some cases have one count and some have five counts, so they're not all one charge.
Right.
So eight ninety-nine charge could mean that there's four.
Eight hundred and ninety-nine cases.
K, oh, okay.
Okay.
Which is well over, well over.
You mean five thousand charges?
Low over, you know.
Roughly, roughly, what portion of those are, are frequent flyers? Probably a third or more. I mean, I'd figure so, or else we'd all have a criminal record with that many cases a year.
But, but nine hundred cases could be, like you said, if there's four charges per case, could be thirty-six hundred charges or something like that.
Probably wouldn't.
Yeah, two thousand won't be surprising. Most, most of them are multi.
Most of them are ones, ones and two.
Ones, yeah, ones and two. All right.
You know, it's kind of ironic, we did it yesterday, but we got the state to take over our social service funding in this county and every other county in North Dakota. And you got this bombshell here in Ramsey County now. I mean, it just, expenses, 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 you know?
Well, the way it all.
Two, three years ago, we never thought we would cap our sixty mils. You know, we thought we were pretty safe at about forty-five, sixty mil.
We thought we were in good shape once we got the social service funding taken away. Now it's just like, oh, okay. We don't get some road, we don't get road mill levies passed, all that kind of stuff. It's gonna get really interesting in a few years.
I think we need to get our ducks in the hole for the next legislature, especially we need some help. Some of these counties are getting whacked like this. You know, probably eight or ten states are getting hit like this. We need help financially.
It's not stopping, obviously.
It's not stopping.
Yeah, we're going on a four-year, five-year proof. Um, of it increasing. I have two thoughts on it. So number one, the crime is still happening whether we enforce it or not, so I'd rather enforce it. And I think, uh, law enforcement would agree with me. Better to be aggressive on it.
Absolutely, yeah.
To look the other way.
No, I'm not telling you to slow down. No, not at all. No.
And I guess the second thought would be we are trying to be as, you know, good stewards as we can with our resources, so we're not trying to bring lung charges and things like that, so.
No, I don't doubt your job.
And anything you can do with the legislature, great.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just, it, the hardest part is that it's, it's sort of a vicious cycle, right? You know, you, you have more arrests, so we need more deputies, we need, we need squad cars, we need all kinds of stuff. And then, you know, you've got a higher case load, so we need more people in the state's attorney's office. Then we need more beds at the jail because more people have been convicted of something. And around and around it goes, and each step of that process costs the county a fortune or a lot.
Costs the state too. The clerk of court's office is busier. They need more help than juvenile court and it's just a vicious cycle. Have, gotta figure out something, but.
Something we really have to work on our legislators though.
I think it's probably.
Look at it.
Do what they can do.
Also worth noting, per capita, Dills Lake, Ramsey County, where we tend to be on the higher end of crime capita. And we have been for thirty, thirty-five years. That's no.
That's surprising.
Nothing new, so. And I just, I really applaud our, look at law enforcement for getting out there and getting after it because you've been really great partners to work with.
Any other questions for both?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, then we'll move on to unfinished business and, uh, ARPA discussion. Uh, last meeting, we left it off, uh, sort of making a decision on whether to continue to move forward with the ARPA committee, uh, until Commissioner Volk was here. And I see that Commissioner Volk is here, so probably have that discussion now. We have any thoughts or, or problems with allowing the ARPA committee to decide, uh, well, not decide, but to make recommendations on proposals that they solicit and bring those recommendations to the county? Uh, or do we not feel that that has value? I think it's sort of the pertinent question.
I guess I have a question for Commissioner Volk. Do you have any questions? Because you weren't, you know, any questions about how the committee's functioning or, or, you know, the, the, the thought that you were looking at maybe a fifty-fifty split of the dollars half would be, the county half would be pushed out to the community and things like that?
I think we talked about that fifty-fifty, I don't know. We were kind of in, all on the same page there before. It's just, where does it go? What are we gonna spend it on, you know? And I think we're all kind of in the same situation, sitting here with like, try to make the right decision.
Well, I think that, that was the idea behind empowering the committee. It's just that the only thing that has changed is the guidance came out and those funds can now be spent on most anything you want.
I've seen that. I read that. Few articles under the whole bunch of, those little fifty pages.
Yeah, yeah, and, and that's, that's the big change, is that before we thought we were gonna have our hands tied really tight. And now we have the ability to basically spend it on anything we'd spent that general fund dollars on.
I mean, how long do we have to spend the money?
Uh, it has to be allocated by the end of twenty twenty-four and spent by the end of twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, and if.
I just don't wanna jump into things where all of a sudden we spend all this money and then two years from now we're like, oh, we should really did this. I wanna be, I would myself wanna be really smart about what we're doing it for, you know?
Well, and, and in the ARPA committee, we came up with criteria, you know, scoring criteria for, for all of the different possible uses of the dollars. And, uh, the idea would be that you'd only bring, you know, the, a slate of, of recommended projects to the county commission when you were confident that it was, it, you know, it was.
Yeah, it was the best projects we had available at the time of the election. And just because we come up with a slate of projects through that committee doesn't mean that the commission can't change those slate of projects or decide that they don't wanna do any of them and they wanna hold on or whatever. The, the main thing is just that the recommendation goes forward just so that the committee knows kind of what we're shooting for. Do we wanna, do we wanna try to move forward within this year? Do we wanna wait? Do we wanna, you know, that, that's more than anything, kind of the guidance that I think as a, as a committee we're looking for, to make sure we're doing kind of what the commission's looking for.
There was how much money in this ARPA fund again?
And then.
Sounds like a lot, but we've already, even just what people have talked about, I think we've spent it about a hundred pounds already.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's the thing. I mean, there, I've heard inklings of larger projects and smaller projects, and it's gonna be interesting to see what's out there and what we could possibly utilize it on. So I think the community's gonna find all kinds of good ways for us to spend it if we allow so.
Yeah, no, I have no doubt. Once word gets out, we'll have a lot of proposals. We were gonna limit it to, uh, either governmental or nonprofit organizations also, so that, you know, business can't come in and stand any new windows, although some of those businesses do need new windows, but.
There's facade approval.
Yeah.
Many grants and loans for those though.
Do you want me to go over it?
No, not in the grand scheme of things, especially when we talked about radio costs and all that kind of stuff. I mean, we could eat up the county side if we kind of stay on a loose fifty-fifty.
One, one thing to keep in mind, again, I think I've dwelled on this before, but everybody's in the same pool. Everybody's gonna be wanting to buy radios. Everybody's gonna want to go building. So the sooner you get on board, the better.
Well, I think we're not the only entity that's gonna have ARPA money to spend.
That's my point.
Yeah, every county, not.
Well, it's not even, it's not even a colony. It's cities, you know.
Township's got some.
Do it, right? Make sure they do it, right?
Actually, if we're not careful, you know, for instance, you don't want a township coming in here thinking they need some of the money when they got a pile of money. I mean.
Well, I've had questions.
If we're not careful with it, we could really get ourselves in the mind, I think, with the public.
Well, yeah, and I've had questions from, uh, some township officers about, you know, did they receive anything? And I told, you know, I told them about the state pushed out some. It's not a lot, but it's probably gonna end up being what about ten thousand dollars? Township is fifty, fifty-two oh eight a township and then a hundred and eighty-two bucks a road mile. So it's gonna end up being probably ten grand a township in that range. So it's not a lot, but it's not nothing. But I mean, I'm, it's better than what they have, but I'm sure if you ask the township officers, they'd say we'd love to have another ten or twenty thousand, check for that. You know, so it's, it's, and, and all of a sudden we've got what, thirty-six townships or something like that? Twenty grand, seven hundred and twenty thousand a block. I mean, it's God. I mean, so there's, there's gonna be unlimited uses for it and unlimited asks for it. So we have, like you said, we have to be wise about how we go about spending it and try to get the best bang for our buck.
Sorry, I'm gonna go to the sheriff first. Are you sure? Okay, go ahead.
Sorry if I'm slow on the uptake here, but did you set priorities as to what areas you'd like to see voted towards first, or is that what the discussion of this video is gonna?
So the, the committee put together a scoring criteria. We had four parameters and it was, uh, you know, number of, of individuals that, that project would benefit the community or could potentially stand to benefit. It was, uh, length of, of benefit, right? So it was how, how long of a, of a lasting power does this have? Uh, it was, one, one was just qualitative, and now I can't remember the fourth one.
Match dollars.
Oh, yeah, if they can provide match dollars, so that got a higher.
Because we can use our dollars here as a match. If they can find more grant dollars and try to stretch those dollars, is kind of what we're pulling the shoot for, to really get people out there shaking the bushes to try to get some additional dollars.
Those, those were our criteria and that would sort of define sort of the priority for what gets recommended.
Sure. So just an example, so it's not like we're gonna handle facilities first and infrastructure second. There's nothing like that being the point.
No.
Okay.
And, and the idea would be what happens if you get a, a incredibly compelling project, it doesn't fit within those parameters, you know? We wanted to leave ourselves the flexibility with sort of the general sense of where we were gonna go, so.
Yeah, and the county side of things, you know, if we're saying loose fifty-fifty, it's one point one million, well, between generator, radios, some simple upgrades to the courthouse, we talked about, you know, bathrooms and things like that. The, the one one's gone, definitely.
All right, that's all I have.
Sheriff. So if you wanted to buy something, fine.
What was the ultimate, what was the initial reason for the money being sent out with the approval? Why did the state grant this money? What was their?
Federal.
Federal.
This is federal.
Federal.
Or federal, okay. What was their role and why? Economic impact?
I know, that's a.
Yeah, yeah, if you find those, let us know.
Okay, that was curious.
I, I, the concept was basically just supposed to be COVID relief dollars.
Exactly.
And the expenses that the agencies have had that.
And then when they.
Social services, the, whatever.
I mean, when they first sent it out, there was such a tight thing on it, it was hard for anybody to even think about spending the money without going to jail.
But you guys just had this discussion about down the road, I mean, the future and how much money things are changing. And the expenses that were occurring along with the law enforcement side of it. You know, just the radios alone, there's gonna be a million dollars. Pretty close, I think there's five hundred to six hundred thousand for just Ramsey County. Let alone our percentage of what, three hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the law enforcement center, we're gonna get it cut it up, right? We're pretty darn close, just with that one item, right? And we're not even talking about the rest of the things that, I think we should rethink that and just kind of keep more of it towards the county end of it at this point. Until we know what's coming down the road before we start, you know, that money's meant to help us, right? The government, governmental agencies, the city devil's lake got some money, correct? When the townspeople are getting some money, you know, I get that, but we need to take care of things that we probably have neglected over the years, like the generator shit, for example. Needs to be done, uh, but we need, and there might be some other things that we haven't thought of yet. I just wonder, that's just my opinion on it, is that we need to take care of ourselves and things that have maybe been pushed off over the years. Because we don't have the funding or it isn't maybe that we need it, but we've gotten by it, and I think there's a lot of them. Because we've gone by the, uh, catch your budget, catch your, just did my for years. And we've done well, don't get me wrong, I, I don't have a, but I just, we have this, this access to this funding that can help us greatly. And I just think we should be a little more.
Well, and the fifty-fifty split isn't some guarantee or anything, it's just, it's just the ballpark. I mean, if, if we see that the county funding makes sense to take care of our needs at seventy percent of that funding, then that's, you know, the committee will forward it. If the commission decides that's how we wanna go, that's how we'll go. I mean, I, I think just anything, more than anything, it's just like, how do we, how do we determine where we wanna go with stuff, just kind of question.
No, I'm just, that's just my own opinion.
No, no, I, no, I, I value it.
And I think everybody up here recognizes that if we had a billion dollars, we could find ways to spend it, right? I mean, we'd be able to, we'd be able to spend all of it, so.
I think if we have something in a budget, for instance, let's say some, something in the budget, let's say you had five hundred thousand dollars in the budget. And now all of a sudden it's coming back at six hundred thousand. Me, that's where I would like to spend some of the money to offset that, so that if your budget was five hundred thousand, can we use some a hundred thousand to get you there? So that it makes sense not taking a million dollars and say, okay, we're gonna pay for it, and now you have another five hundred thousand dollars in your budget for whatever. But you already budgeted the five hundred thousand, and it's gonna be six hundred thousand, we didn't use a hundred thousand. Yeah, and, and things like that, you know, so that there's more people in the pie in the end.
Well, we saved a hundred thousand, we can put it on the taxpayers.
Exactly.
Taking care of a lot of people in Ramsey County then.
Yep.
We can put this whole thing to that and save that money instead of put it in the general, we could put.
Unless it was like you said, you're in a war then.
And then, but I'm not suggesting that, but it's an option we have. I think we need to take requests from people and organizations and get them on, in front of us and then go from there.
In front of this party or in front of a committee?
Well, from the committee or us, it's the same thing, right?
Well, right, I mean, the committees.
We're gonna see what, we're gonna see what you guys are seeing, right?
Right.
Yeah, well, the documentation will move up, so.
Yeah.
I guess I'm looking at it, I don't disagree, we need to take care of the county perspective first, but there's a lot of nonprofits and options that we send a little bit of funding to here and there that have all kinds of projects that they've pushed off too, because we can't afford to give them an extra ten or twenty grand.
Yeah.
So I'm looking at it, I mean, it, it's a question of a transformational project versus stuff you put off. To me, the stuff you put off that needs to get done to keep things running is the things I wanna at least look at. You know, because I mean, there's a lot of, like I said, you know, something, something like the safe house, you know, they're always looking for additional funding. That's something where they had all kinds of additional use during COVID, it's just, uh, senior meals and services, we already gave them some money, but they might need some additional funding for things, you know? Projects like that, I think will go a long way in terms of our dollars, and it'll, it'll help strengthen all those other and the nonprofits and entities that we help fund, and that, and that's kind of where my vision has been. But that doesn't mean that's all we're gonna see or that's what we're gonna see at all, but I, I think it just, I wanna see what kind of projects we're gonna see. Assess the county needs at the same time and then kind of go from there.
Well, and, and what would scare me the most is, is to put money towards operating expenses. Because, because then at that point, you're, you're almost, I mean, unless they're gonna sunset, right, those expenses. But you're, you're functionally lying to the taxpayer, right?
Well, it's gotta be, it's one-time expenses, is, is kind of how I see it, because we don't wanna base on, we don't wanna do something.
That's not what I'm sold for.
Yeah, one-time expense stuff like can we take the cost of the radios off of the taxpayers? That's a one-time expense, we can, hopefully those will have a.
We can take part of the cost off, yes, we can do that, we can do anything we want, I guess, up there at the commission, but let's try to do it so we can pass some money around.
Exactly.
We were gonna pay for those radios anyway, the county was off a million dollars, you know? So now we can relieve the county taxpayers of some of that burden, so we can do it that way. But I mean, I think we need to get requests in front of us, and I think that will give us.
Yeah, prioritize.
When I brought up, when I brought up more than a hundred requests, maybe.
Well, at, at the committee level, we'll prioritize requests off of that scoring scale, uh, the thought process was this. We would solicit requests, so we would basically send a letter out to the nonprofits or anybody that we knew that would hopefully possibly benefit from this. Get requests in, everybody on the committee, the four of us and the five of us that sit up, maybe we'd score it separately. And we'd come together and talk about it, and we would see what we think for the benefit would be, and then prioritize those and then bring it to the commission, commission at that point.
And the, the idea would be to have that recommended list, you know, broken down, and then of course with the runners-up in case the commission, you know, said, oh, we don't like that project or whatever. You know, but here's, you know, the idea would be to bring a slate that says, here's how to spend the money. Uh, and we wanna have that here by August, by the end of August. You know, so that, that gives you plenty of time to make a decision, uh, here on the commission on what you wanna do. And if you decide to abandon the entire endeavor, that's also a possibility and you'll still have time.
Yes.
Spend it some other way, so. We all comfortable with that?
Take requests then.
Just to keep my own mind up, didn't this two point two million come from the lost revenue from the state? Uh, when they, the state got their ARPA money and they figured their percentage for loss of revenue, was that what this came down?
It might have been one of the fifteen.
They called it, they called it federal, they called it county lost revenue through the feds, but what it came down to is this, is my understanding. Yes. My understanding and going through the training that Terry Trainer was talking about, it was the association of counties at the national level went to the, went to them on their regular rules and said, the counties don't know how they're gonna spend it because their hands are tied so tight that they basically put a ten million dollar exemption on, called it lost revenue, just so we have ease of spending. Essentially, is what it comes down to. Because the reporting requirements were gonna just kill, kill all of us. And they just said, we'll put a ten million dollar exemption on it, so basically you guys can go out and spend it as you see fit in your communities, because you probably have a better idea what your communities need. At least that's my understanding. Now, the larger counties, they have more requirements over the top, if they got more than that ten million dollar.
And that's where it's gonna, that's where it's gonna create some stress on us when they have a binding, where you can only spend it on so much, so many things now that it's open. It, it's gonna be interesting.
Yes.
It will be all right.
Is, is, is there any type of restrictions, requirements that have to be followed, or did they open all that up?
It's any, it's anything you can spend a general fund on.
Yeah, the one thing we did have a question on last time at our committee meeting was the difference between like five oh one C threes, five oh one C sixes. There are some language in the final rules, well, that's, we have to make sure that we do things right there with the nonprofits. But when they, when we get solicitations, we'll double check everything and double check and make sure it fits against the rules and all that. Make sure that we're only giving it to entities that are allowable.
So the commission is still comfortable keeping an ARPA committee and we can put together a meeting and work on timeline and blasting out for proposals and see what we get?
I'm game for that, because to put the ideas together, we're still gonna make the last decision.
Yeah. No, no money will ever get spent, that's not.
You see everything out of your.
Yeah, it takes no power out of the commission's hand and allows the commission to essentially not have to sit there and vet proposals for our results. Oh, yeah, sickly. It's the purpose of the committee. And if, if the commission, three months from now sees that we've got tons of expenses from the county that we don't think we were gonna have or whatever, or we decide that those expenses are more important than the other expenses that we see coming, we flip the percentage up and we spend more money on the county side. I mean, we still, we've talked about it, we still have to decide, you know, stuff like, we know we're gonna cover, cover the emergency managers' radios, the sheriff's radios. We've got a little fire department out there, what kind of money they got sitting out there? We got highway department we're gonna have to cover, we've got, you know, so we have to make decisions as a commission, and that's gonna also feed into where those dollars go.
For our general fund.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were looking at that for the whole day, start with, you know, how we're gonna do that, I don't know. Now we have a little help, so it's great, we wanna make sure we use that help correctly.
Yeah, exactly.
Just have to go through the process.
And I'm glad that we actually have started putting together a process, you know, this, this would be very difficult to shoot from the head with, I think, so. Very good, any further discussion on the American Rescue Plan Act dollars? Here we go, we'll move on to new business and discuss the middle levy expirations that are coming up and all of that on rodeo we're about to ride.
It's a lot of stuff, obviously, man, big stuff, like things. Blind candy, blind candy. Can, can I ask, I guess, do we have a, a form for what we're gonna discuss here or just kind of start, start it?
I didn't bill it for it.
Yeah, can I ask the question, so, and Kevin, I'm sure has probably got more information, Candy as well, so the, the county road fund is expiring, that's the ten mills, correct?
Ten mill.
So does that, that ten mills isn't rolling into this county road bridge capital projects, which is gone? So we already have a county road bridge, right?
Yes.
And do we have a county project fund as well, correct?
Well, we have a.
We have a capital project, but we've never.
Excuse me, capital project, we've had twelve oh eights.
We've never, we've never.
Never put money.
But we have, right now we have authority to use that or not?
I think they'd like to see us have just road and bridge, you know, just.
So right now we have a ten mil road and bridge, and that's gonna stay in place, correct?
Well, that's one of like three mills, but it can go up to ten.
It can go up to ten, okay. But we have a, so we're, we're capped right now at.
It's less than three right now.
Well, it says ten mills commissioner authority.
That's what the law says.
Okay, so we could go up to ten if we needed to.
Ten is, ten is the max.
So basically, the county road one that's expiring is ten, is a ten mil max right now, right? Or, no, five.
Well, it would be, it would be twenty.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out what, what we're losing when it goes off versus what we currently have, because I know the whole portion of this was put together in fifteen when they combined the mills, and then they had expiration of mills. So are they combined mills? Because I remember sitting in when we had our Northeast Nine meeting and Terry Trainer was explaining it, and it looked to me like, yeah, there's gonna be some mills we're gonna lose, but it looked like they're expanding some of the mills too. I was kind of confused by how he was explaining it, I guess, and that's also six months ago plus, so my mind is a little. So are we just losing a straight ten mills right now of possible mill levies?
Sixteen roughly.
Okay.
Well, we, we keep three of those, yeah, but thirteen, about thirteen. See, we voted twice, a long, long time ago, we voted way back in the fifties and sixties, they voted and put pavement on the federal aid roads, well, we get like three mills out of that.
Yeah.
So the highway tax?
Yeah.
And then in eighty-nine or whatever it was, not too long, but we put the ten mills on or, and we use that for chipseal and all the time. So those ten and those three are rolling, but we've got three that we're using in road and bridge, but that can vote a ten, according to the law.
Okay. I'm just, just looking at it, so it says, yeah, so new, so the capital twelve oh eight can be expanded if we need to. And then two road and bridge levies are expiring, so those are just expiring, those aren't what we're voting on. We're actually voting on the single now county road and bridge going from ten to twenty then, right?
Yeah.
If that, that's what we're looking at, just trying to get clarity for what we're, what we're doing here.
We're looking at what the ten mills are.
Yes. Yes. So they're getting, they're getting rid of, so what now are we established at on that farm to market federal aid number? Because it says levy established by ballot, is that the ballot on?
That's this. The head out.
That was in eighty-nine?
Okay, so, so basically, we're gonna have ten mills expiring there and fifteen mills expiring under the county road fund. So we're actually losing fifteen mills then.
Yeah, three of those, yeah.
Uh, and then the county road bridge is going to be the possibility of going to twenty then. But right now we have the authority to go to ten, but we've been doing about three, right? So then hypothetically, with the removal of those till two, plus since we're already using three, we're down eighteen then. Because we can't backfill the three.
I think the word I used on the radio was catastrophic.
Sounds correct to me.
So.
I guess the question then, in my mind is, you know, we talked about this quite a bit, extension, extension doesn't wanna go, well, not quite a bit, but extension doesn't wanna go up against roads, which is completely understandable, because then, you know, if people are gonna vote yes on one, they might vote, they'll probably vote no on the other, or they'll just say taxes, no, and they'll vote no and no. So, so the question is, do we think it's more worthwhile to go for the road first or or the extension first, I guess, is the question in my mind, because unless everybody's like, we don't need to go for either of them. But to me, I don't think that's a question.
Does the, uh, four H, I can't think of it, do they wanna go up under mills from what they're?
No, they just wanna hold it.
So they're just maintaining, right?
Yeah, so, so.
Two and three quarters.
You're, you're just maintaining, right?
Well, unless they raise it, but yeah, that, that should be the idea is to just maintain.
Well, and my thought with this, and I, I'm not saying this is what we do, but in thinking about it, the extension service mills is under two, is two, I mean, that's what's allowable. We voted to go up to the possibility of four. Right now, we're at general fund mill levy at what, forty-eight-ish, something like that? So if we don't get that extended for some reason by twenty twenty-four, we can easily cushion the blow of we're at what, three and a quarter right now or three and a half extension?
Two and a half.
Two and a, that's what we're using.
Two and a half.
So all we'd have to do is tack a half mil from, if we didn't get that passed, is tack a half mil onto the general fund top, and then we'd be okay. Because we'd have to be forty and a half, but if we don't get the ten mills passed, we're gonna be really in, not trouble so to speak, but it's gonna be catastrophic.
Road won't be in good a shape in five years, they are at home.
Exactly, so I, to me, I, I think it's beneficial to try to get that one passed first.
Really, you don't, you don't think, you don't think spending time, you know, mentioning to the voters how important it is? Maybe, maybe having that till November to do it would be helpful.
I don't think, I don't think you wanna put it on the general or on the ball one, you wanna put it on June.
I agree with you.
I think June would be better.
So if I, if we're gonna go on June and extension's ready to go, maybe that's where we go, but I'm just saying that I think we need to split them. And to me, it's more, I mean, the extension mill levy is very important, but it's more catastrophic, we leave the road funding. Because we can always tuck that extension funding on the general if we have to, whereas if we have to take ten mills and stick it on top of the general, we're capped at sixty basically, we've got most of that.
And request what we have right now, don't request more.
No, just, just so we have the ability to keep funding the way we have been.
It's not new, it's just continuation of what we've been doing.
Yes, it's gotta be road that way.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it has to be, I mean, we can't sell it, but we have to explain it, especially if we can.
Yeah.
Because if you put on their app.
No, no, we're not adding anything.
This isn't an additional.
Today's world is.
Continuation of.
Do, do you wanna continue to have the quality of roads we've had in the county? And hopefully, we're making the bet that people think we have quality roads, which I think we do, I drive all the roads in the county.
I think we have great roads.
I think comparatively to some of the other counties I've driven around in, we have a pretty god-odious road system.
Yeah.
I mean.
Let's keep it.
Let's keep it that way.
On top of having it in June, if they didn't pass you, you'd go in November.
You also, if you have to, yes. So you, you, I guess, my question to you, Lucas, is you're of the opinion that we should probably go for extension first then?
Well, I guess I don't have a, a super strong feeling, I just think that if, because it's so critical, right? It might be worthwhile to spend that time, you know, talking about it at every possible opportunity, how important it is, right? Between now and November. But I can understand your point, and I, I, I agree with you that in general, the primary election's probably an easier bar to clear. I just, I'm wondering if, if it's not worthwhile. I just, I'm wondering if, if it's not worthwhile to spend the time talking about it. And then that's, and that's only coming from, you know, I think one of the reasons that Home Rule didn't make it was because it wasn't, we didn't, we didn't get enough words in enough years about it, basically. So I don't know, I just, I'm not, not convinced either way, I'm just raising that as a possibility.
The other question I would have is, did we find out if any of the other local political subdivisions have to go on the ballot for additional levy, or not additional, but keeping the levies they have, are they getting any combined levies? Is, is the school district having any issues?
At this point with what?
You, you guys aren't, none of your levies are being combined, and then you have to go ask for the continued taxing authority.
No, at this point, okay.
City doesn't have any, correct? Park board none?
You're looking at a potential new ask though, right?
Possibly, yes.
When, when, when were you thinking you wanted to put that on your ballot?
Well, that depends on what the survey that we have out right now says, and and that survey's really gonna dictate as far as from the school's perspective on what, where we go and what we do. You know, you guys were just talking about a process that you guys are looking at for your art funds, we've been going through that, through that same process since last March with our Esther funds. And so this is actually coming together as a whole year worth of work for a committee that now puts out the survey, and now we're asking for feedback from the community. And we're really gonna be dictated by what the community says to us. If our community says, yeah, we want you to move forward with some of these projects, then you're probably gonna see an ask, but the committee, or the survey comes back and says, no, eighty percent of people think this is a bad idea, then we're going to plan B and we're gonna start looking at other options.
So provided that your survey comes back positively, are you looking at a ballot this cycle?
Not, not June, not by June, no, that would be, that would be too quick. Our timeline would probably be more in the fall. And we do a special, we do a special election for that.
Right, no, I, I understand that, but again, it's just the more you can space these out, right, it's all, it's your medicine.
Well, yeah. And, and you also have to be aware of the, the park board and the upcoming park board, um, at the city council here. Um, so yeah, we're well aware of that, we've talked with the park board, in fact, I have a meeting without ten thirty today regarding it and regarding some of the baseball projects they have going on, that they're trying to do. And so, you know, and again, I think the big thing with that is the school wants to partner with everybody, including you guys on that. Um, any way we can help to make this a better community for all of us, I think it's beneficial for, for all of us that live here. I think it's great, and I think the fact that we're having these conversations at the same time is outstanding, cause using those art funds are perfect ways to do that, to make our community better, and that's what the school's trying to do as well, so. Well, and that's part of my concern too, is I wanna make sure we don't step on, if, if you guys have to look for, like you said, we need to space them and make sure that the community understands what we're attempting to do and why we're attempting to ask in the way we're asking and things of that nature. And, and we wanna do that as well for you guys as well, so.
But if you put too much stuff on there, people are just gonna go down and they'll hold it.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Language is move forward and put it on June ballot, the same bills we've been requesting in the past, and, um.
And we're not asking for more, we're asking to maintain.
Keep it the same.
You're talking just the roadside of it, no?
No.
Or both of them? Extension, both of them?
Extension. Both.
Let's say one day to go through, you can, can you put it back?
Of course, of course.
Keep it the same. Right?
Well, yeah, in my mind, yeah, we don't need any additional taxing authority, we just need to be able to keep operating the way we've been operating from that standpoint.
We're not asking for more money, we're just trying to.
And after the June election, we'll see where we're at.
Just a, but, maybe prudent to wait until after Thursday when school district has the or deciding where to put it.
You know, I think we should move forward now.
Isn't, isn't your final like this?
Thursday won't be a, won't, factor, Thursday is just our public forum to, uh, give information about the survey, how we went through our whole process over the last year, and we've discussed with Rotary, Quanas, we've, we've shared it all over the place as far as our process, and many of you have already heard our process that we've gone through, because it's been a a year project, but again, our public forum is really to bring people in, explain the process we've gone through, answer any questions about the survey, and also give building tours of the middle school, if anybody wants to walk through the middle school and see what a nineteen thirty-seven building looks like, and so that's kind of our, our opportunity to kind of give that feedback back to the community, and then our survey is done in March eighteen. So we actually won't have any concrete ideas as far as where we're going until March eighteen.
Okay, and, and the other thing is, you've already made mention that, you know, if we're looking at putting both these in June, and, you know, they're hopefully gonna both be out of your way by that point.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, if you're not, we're ready by June.
We're not gonna be ready by June. And so, my concern in putting both in June is they, the extension arrives in visiting with them explicitly asked that they don't wanna be on the same ballot. So we have the choice, we can do whatever we wanna do.
I heard that, I heard that.
The only thing that I, if one doesn't go through, let's say that one didn't, obviously to put it back on the ballot.
Yeah.
The win-win for us.
Or we, or we've got the next twenty twenty-four as well, to ask again if we.
The win-win for us is that we're leaving them the same, we're not raising them, we're leaving them the same.
I, I think, I think they're both likely to pass.
If we can explain it well enough.
Yeah, I, I think as long as we're out there and saying, this is not new, this is maintaining, this is, this is all the services that you've expected for the same cost, just extend us the authority to continue doing it, I think, I think they'll both pass, and I think it's probably fine that they're both on the same ballot realistically, as long as there's not a new ask also, right, that, that if you, you know, that, that would be when I would say they absolutely should be on different ballots if you're asking for new things.
They're gonna be the same, but put them in June, it's just a touch over ninety days.
Is the park board out? I just something to think to consider, is what the park board would be asking.
Well, at, at this point, the city has not made a decision on whether to even put it on the ballot.
Hopefully, we make a decision today.
I think you're making out a motion, are you?
Yes. Jim's ready to move.
I'll, I'll go ahead and second that, that they both get put on as, as continuation of.
On the June ballot?
On the June ballot.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign? The motion is carried.
I'm sure somebody tells them on the second floor, then.
Just be ready to talk, I guess.
Oh, it'll be fun.
Well, it'll work, well, my question, not, not to belabor the point, but, but now, the next question I think is, we need to discuss how do we, how do we go out and, and explain to the community what we're asking for, so they're not in the dark when June rolls.
I think you named that on my one.
No.
You have the dollar, right?
You're right, I'm not running anymore, so I can go and take bullets.
Thank you, thank you.
I'll go and take bullets.
I think, I think it's pretty easy ask to just say, hey, look.
Just be honest.
Just maintain it the same.
Just been here since nineteen ninety-eight, right? That guy up here has been here much longer than that.
Some of us have.
The good thing is, you gotta just be honest with yourself. There's nothing hidden, we're not hiding anything.
So we just have to make sure we explain it to them, and they understand it, you know?
Maybe somebody will, we're happy.
And we'll talk to Eric, Art is often frequently, as he's willing to talk to me, and we'll get it on the radio, and we'll just explain what it is, it'll be, I think we'll be all right. Any further discussion on middle levy expiration? Okay, and we'll move on to a discussion on compensation study.
We'll forward this study, right?
Yeah, um, I don't know if you guys reviewed the proposal that was sent to us from Gallagher, um, we seem to be the only agency in the upper Midwest that does something like this, Patrick Klein, Ellen. I've reached out to other counties and asked, have you done your, you done a survey, who, who you done it with, you know, could you done it in house, and yeah. And Gallagher's name kept coming up, and as Candy can shine a little bit too, if she has something to add, and sat in a call with a couple of their representatives, of course, they're trying to sell their product, of course, and everybody gone to the back page probably and saw what the cost is. I know that the commission has talked about this quite often, having some kind of survey done, we actually have our salaries aligned with if it's like, like counties or even, you know, some, even a private sector. What I'm finding, just a little bit of research I have done, I think we're, with salaries, we're pretty close with entry level stuff, it's a lot of our supervisors that might be a little upside down. Um, the one thing this company does is they, they compare apples with apples, so they're job descriptions of the information they pulled from another county, they compare to our job description, and they'll make sure, you know, as they're calculating the numbers and it matches, that we're, you know, again, they're comparing apples to apples.
Were they out of?
Many apples, like, they're, I believe they got offices throughout the, throughout the nation. And they do more than themselves, you know, they would review all our job descriptions, they would, you know, they'd look at pay structures and step programs, and, I mean, they, we kind of, even at that, even at that cost, it's kind of the bare bones that they would do for us, really just reviewing our salaries and that, helping us through the process. If we find those salaries that are turned upside down, how do we approach? Getting those back in line and getting our, our employees, you know, maybe where they should be.
I, I guess, from my perspective, I don't think that the cost presented is unreasonable by any means.
I was so sticker shocked because when I had some just general conversation with them in October, November, and she had basically proposed like thirteen thousand or fourteen thousand dollars was the bare bone, so when they came with this, I was like, I don't know what you talked about earlier, but in the big scheme of things, no, it's not, you know, probably a good investment, cause when you spend on rehiring employees and retraining, you know, all those, all those other costs that come with it, so. Uh, in, in, you know, you said you talked with other counties and they, their name kept coming up, positive reviews from the other counties? All of them, except for one, I cannot remember what county it was, I don't know, I don't think they liked, from what just talking to the I think they were really told that their salaries were out of line, and. Oh, they didn't like what they were told, basically? Right, yeah, we'd have to make these big adjustments. But everybody else, then, no, association of counties, they did a survey for their offices, so, and that would break work down.
Is there other counties in the state that do this?
Yeah, actually, there's. There's a list right here, that says Billings, Burley, McKenzie, Montreal, Richland, Sargent, Warke. They've got familiarity at least, that's good.
I think it was last week's MITI paper, or after the last county commission, we were counting that. And this is the ultimate, they're talking about that, are you? So, I don't. Go out there, you read for your colleagues.
Well, looks like they did the survey for them.
Did they?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and who knows how much that's just a shooting the messenger situation, right, I mean, just, just because they tell you.
Yeah, it does, yeah.
Well, and that's the thing, I mean, if, 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 if we decide to report, we have to know that there's a possibility that it's gonna come back, we're not gonna let the results. I mean, plain and simple. But at the same point, I think it's only.
I mean, you can get results back. Doesn't matter, it makes a difference, doesn't mean that you have to go with the community, I mean, it's a, it's a study.
No.
Like, to see where you're at, and sometimes if the funds don't, aren't there to do this, you know, get a study was there so that we know where we're at, so you can plan for the future.
Well, I think it's justification to the employees too, cause you get questions about, you know, am I being paid the correct amount, and things of that nature, and you can point back and say, hey, we got a market survey done.
Recent, recent summer, probably. Be able to get this with.
Well, and people don't wanna realize that some jobs cap out, and it's only gonna get for the top, there's just a lot of it. But when was the last time we did one, twenty thirteen, right? It was before I got on the commission, cause we haven't had one since, I think we, I think right when I got on, the first year we budgeted, it was early.
Will it reuse?
And there's, there's not the.
There are.
The files and HR, there's that I have on there.
Well, it was, I think the last salary study was probably done around the time, or not long after you put the step system in.
I haven't been telling you.
Really?
No, I think it was.
But it's been a while, that's all I'm saying.
She's gone by now. I don't, I don't.
I, I, all I'm saying is, I've been on for seven years now, I don't recall us ever doing it that seven years, and that probably means it's time. Just a matter of are we willing to.
On table it?
Pay the cost.
Give it some thought.
There's a motion.
That's a motion.
Okay, there's a motion to table it, we're the second, second, okay?
Table, yes. One thing I would, if wanna table it, and of course, that's, um, wanna talk about, think about it, is if we, it's, Candy can, I mean, we got a budget to create salaries for next, you know, for the next year, this, this survey, they say it's gonna take four to six months, so if we table it, and push that, we can result all the way to further.
Yeah, I think, I think we have a, a good track record of longevity within our employees. So if it comes down to waiting six months and, and putting it on the twenty-three budget, or the twenty-four budget, you know, I don't see a mass exodus of employees taking, you know.
Yeah, I don't see the county going through with the buzzword right now, the big, the big resignation that's happening.
Yeah.
I don't see that this happening to the county right now. Um, my short time of been here, if you take out social services, maybe literally don't have a lot of turnover.
Right.
I mean, I, Sheriff Nelson, there's a couple, two guys in his department since I started, but I mean, we don't have that turnover a lot, it has to do with our benefit package. Um, that health insurance is huge, um, I saw a survey, one of the counties did, and the top twelve populated counties, there's only three or four of us that make whole family health insurance.
I think that, that vote in June is gonna be pretty big to us, you know, if it don't go through, you know.
Oh, yeah. We're gonna start trimming a little bit. And we'll have until the end of twenty twenty-four, so potentially, you, you still have the runner-up elections, right, next cycle, twenty twenty-four.
From what I'm seeing, it enabled up to some trimming.
Well, and I, I think also too, I mean, we'll have some time in that. Even if, even if we don't make a decision this meeting, we can make a decision next meeting, if it's six months, we have time, we could, you know, what do we budget in July, we can stick in a contingency percentage above the top, under the assumption we might have some additional salary increases. And, you know, just a percentage above, and, and then we can work with it, once we get those numbers back, but I mean, you know, cause we have until, what's our last date for?
October.
October, so we've got a little bit of time, if it's in that, you know, pressure on, you're done in four months, well, some time to get it adjusted correctly, I think. Still, but I, I wanna think about it as well a little bit.
Talk about it.
Yeah.
I think that's fine, so.
I'm gonna.
You better table, yeah. Um, okay, great, so then we have home state credit.
Then go.
Okay, do we, go on the.
I thought, I thought for the table, you only had to.
It's a non debatable motion, but it's people.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tools Boarder, appreciate it. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign? Motion is carried. Okay, home state credits then. We'll do it through.
Second.
Motion in the second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign? Motion is carried. Portfolios, start with Mr. Paul.
How about visitors?
Oh.
What's with visitors? Jesus, I skipped it.
I'd like to hear from Mr. Bocky and what the school's got going on and public forum on Thursday evening, I understand?
Yep. Um, yeah, I can certainly talk to that, um, so as you're, as you're aware, or if you haven't received, in your mailbox, we sent out a survey, which basically is a compilation of, like I said, oh, like about a year's worth of work, analyzing and looking at our facilities from top to bottom, when it comes to all across our whole district. Uh, we haven't had a long range facility plan since two thousand and two, and so we went and started going through that process, starting in March, where we brought in architects and engineers to start analyzing our structures and our buildings and our facilities.
Again, from top to bottom, they also ran twenty-four focus groups with our staff, um, to really get the idea as far as, you know, what is the work environment like, um, as far as the facilities? Uh, what are things you need, what are things that are, uh, sitting quite well? Um, I'll be honest and say our buildings are well maintained, uh, but we do have some code compliance, um, some structural things that are, uh, just with age breaking down. Um, altogether, when we look at our buildings, uh, we're looking at sixty-three million dollars worth of code and ADA compliance type issues across the whole district. Um, and a majority of that, about a quarter of that comes from the middle school of about seventeen point five million dollars. Um, that sets with code issues. Um, a building that was built in nineteen thirty-seven does not, uh, you know, obviously it's not sitting, um, at the same point it is in two thousand twenty-one or two thousand twenty-two. Um, and the educational adequacy that we provide for our students is quite different than what it was in nineteen thirty-seven. For example, I'll give you, uh, most of those rooms, we only have two outlets. We have thirty Chromebooks to, uh, for kids to, uh, charge, so you do the math on that one. Um, as far as how we charge that. Additionally, the electrical outlets and the electrical that's set up in nineteen thirty-seven is not saying this, two thousand twenty-two. Um, so one of those, those are just some of the things we're going through. We have a committee of about twenty individuals, uh, like majority of them built from the community, um, that have no tie to the school, um, individuals that don't have kids in the school, but are just community members. Um, a majority of that is, is part of our committee. Um, and so we have about ten of those individuals, and then we have, um, two individuals, uh, two teachers, we have two parents. Um, we have some administrators that serve as just there for references and, and resources so that they understand all the financial aspects and, and what we do on a daily basis. Um, so we've been going through this process, the survey, um, basically outlines all of the data and research and the, all the, uh, information we've gone through since, um, basically since March, um, and since August and when, since the meeting, and then puts together potential solutions. Um, and like I said, those solutions are what the committee has come up with as possible viable solutions moving forward. Um, it's going to be crucially important that we get input from the community as far as whether those are viable options or not. If our community tells us that's not a viable option, then obviously we're not going to move forward with those. So this is our way of saying, all right, give us your input before we go do anything. Uh, we'd rather know before we go to about where we're sitting. Um, and so really the, the, the community forum on Thursday is going to be basically to gather input from our community and answer any questions about the survey so that they can fill out that survey as, as accurately as possible. Um, so they understand everything that goes on or everything that was in that survey. Um, and so the, the forum on Thursday is specifically just for the facilities. Now we have some restructuring, um, talks and potential restructuring of our elementary schools. Um, that's a different public forum, we actually have two public forums for that, together input from our parents and community members about that possibility. Um, and those ones are on March sixteen to March twenty-first. So we have kind of a couple, um, things we're looking at right now. Um, again, all of this has come from our long range facility, uh, task force committee. Um, and again, that, those individuals have been meeting since, since August and done on all the building tours and, uh, have had the chance to dive into the data and the reports and, yeah, it's been a lot of, a lot of interesting meetings, so.
The, the restructuring, could you talk to about the benefits of restructuring the elementary, um, facilities?
Yeah, I think there's, uh, there's some, there's definitely some benefits and there's some challenges as well to that. Um, the benefits that we see from, from a standpoint of academically, uh, the brain development of, of our kids and, and the opportunity to be able to actively focus on specific grade levels. The collaborations for, the collaboration for our teachers and our staff to be able to collaborate and look at specific grades. Um, we've also struggled from time to time of balancing our, um, services across our school district. Um, for instance, our IP numbers, our title numbers, um, all of those are demographic numbers at times. Well, this takes that out of the picture, we aren't balancing anything. You're in first grade, you're going to, you're going to Sweetwater, you're in third grade, you go to Prairie View. So right now, the restructure that we're discussing is looking at taking all first and second graders and putting them at Sweetwater and all third and fourth graders and putting them at Prairie View. Um, and, and one other benefit with that is that our kids travel together throughout the whole school system. We aren't splitting them. Um, right now, I'll be honest, as an outsider coming in, one of the things I really loved about Devil's Lake, um, is when you come in as a, as a kindergarten, you're a firework and you graduate as a firework. There's no this, uh, we're Sweetwater Lions and Prairie View Mustangs and we're fireworks all the way through. Well, right now, we have that divide between Sweetwater and Prairie View, we do. We, we have two different schools, um, and we're not one district. Um, this brings our whole district together and puts them together as one district and truly emphasizes that firework mindset of we're all together in this. Um, and so there's definitely strengths to that. Um, again, academic services, being able to provide that, some challenges, transportation. That's one that I've heard from people as far as transportation. Our transportation is completely changed since COVID, um, as a result of the fact that we can't mix buses and do that kind of thing. So we used to have a depot approach where all the buses picked up and then they came to the central middle school. We all got off and got them to your correct bus, that no longer happens. Um, right now, what happens is every single bus goes to every single school in the morning and every single bus picks up at every single school in the afternoon. So for instance, if we have a bus right now that we have two siblings or three siblings riding the bus, they can all ride the bus together and get dropped off at each one of their schools. So you don't have to drop off at three different schools. The other thing is, is you could drop off all your kids, all four or five kids at one school. Those older kids could get on a bus then that drops off at that school and get to the other schools. So really you don't have to, you know, it's going to take some planning and arranging as far as what time they need to be there and some of those aspects. But we have that all set up and the system set up where we can provide that transportation. Um, the often, the other thing we got to realize is that we do live at Devil's Lake, North Dakota, and it is a five minute drive. Uh, my drop off, my kids in the morning, um, it's a five minute drive, uh, from one place to the next. And then so I understand that it's, it's not like a Farborough Grand Porch where we're driving twenty minutes across the, across the way. So, but that is a challenge, that is definitely a challenge. Another challenge is we're going to be looking at again, uh, a change for staff and for, uh, for personnel that is going to be happening. It's also a transition for students, which obviously transitioning students to new school is sometimes tough. Um, however, I believe strongly that our staff is well equipped to make those transitions. We do that on a yearly basis, every year we do visits at different schools. Um, we are well equipped as a staff to provide that transition as seamlessly as possible. Um, and so some of those challenges I'm fully aware of, but I think there's also strengths to that aspect um, that provide opportunities for us as, as a school district to move forward.
I knew that was something for you.
Yeah.
For absolute food for thought.
Yeah.
You said first, second, third, fourth, when you do the restructure, right?
Yeah, yeah.
You guys put the survey out of six, seven, eight for the mid school. There is some really misunderstanding just listening to my coworker.
Yeah.
Um, when you came out with the survey, I think a strong thing that would have made good is just like you're explaining now before they could go on and actually enter your information. It's fine to send out the surveys, but you should have opted until you could actually explain to the public what you're fighting for. But I think you're going to get some not very good results back because they didn't have, maybe just gave to us.
Right.
You know, it's like a fifth grade right now, the way you explained it to us is getting left out there because.
Yep.
They don't know that there, there's that, um, not for sure. And a fifth grade class is very large.
Yep.
So there's that not for sure.
Yep.
So that, when you put out your information, they're there to really clarify that because.
That's a, that's one we'll touch, touch on, um, and that's one thing the committee discusses, you know, where is fifth grade? Where is your fifth grade position correctly? You know, we've had that talk a lot, and so when we did the additional research on fifth grade, we're actually the only class A school in the state that has fifth grade at the middle school. Um, so for instance, we're the only class A school that has that, and when I talk about that, I'm talking specifically at middle school, obviously there's K twelve schools and K eight schools and there's all those. But we're the only class A state and we're actually one of only four across the whole state that has fifth grade in the middle school. And there, there's some reasons for that, that's the social, emotional mindset of a fifth grader, probably more of an elementary feel. Um, the brain development of a fifth grader, probably not quite at the level of a seventh or eighth grader. Um, the maturity levels are quite different. I've spent, uh, six years teaching in a middle school and the eighth graders, fifth graders are quite drastic, they're quite different. Um, and so I, I understand the differences between those age groups. And so, uh, the committee felt that the fifth grade would be better positioned at an elementary school. So if we look at this restructuring and this facility work, the reason it only says six through eight is because at the same time as we would transition to adding the middle school, if that were the wishes of the community, we would look at putting the fifth grade at one of the elementary schools.
And I always say this.
Yep.
So like when you were given your talk.
Yep.
Never was the fifth grade involved in the two, you know what I'm saying?
Right, yeah.
So just make sure that.
Yep.
The community know that, or not just getting left out there.
Right, absolutely, and then, yeah, we're not going to actually, we're not going to put a fifth grade, you know, just in an own building by themselves, yeah, so.
Or one of the biggest reasons I break that up is because I have two fifth grades.
Yep, yep.
You know, so I'm like, whoa, what's happening here? What's, what's the big change that's going to end up in my household?
Right.
You know, so there was some concern there.
And ultimately, we probably should put the grade levels on the, the, the building, if that makes sense. Um, so that way we just save the middle school.
But you're trying to be honest with them.
Exactly, and that's the thing is we're trying to be honest, we're trying to be upfront, and sometimes that bites in the butt, you know what I mean? But we try to do as much as we can to be honest and upfront with them.
Could you touch on the A program?
Yeah, absolutely, great question. So, um, LA CTC currently right now, um, we don't have an A program, we previously did, um, but we're looking at adding an A program back in. So we applied for a grant, a CTE grant through the state, which is a matching grant, fifty for fifty. Um, and we applied for one point two million, um, and then we'd have to find a matching, um, the matching funds to add to that. Um, and so basically we'd be looking at a two point four million dollar project to add an A facility to our current building of Lake area for a technology center. Um, that would allow us to have a shop, some classrooms, um, and it would actually be positioned right across the street basically from the Precision A over at Lake Region State College and would allow us to have that partnership as well, um, directly with them, um, and continue that. Now, a lot of it's going to depend on that grant. Um, I'll be honest and say that I sat in the CTE state board meeting last, uh, yesterday morning and, uh, there, the original list that came out, um, so there's a list that came out that originally was given out by the CTE director and committee that basically stated here are the individual districts that are going to receive this grant and Devil's Lake was on that list, it was a one point two million dollar funding for us. However, the committee reconvened on the twenty-fifth, on, uh, the twenty-fifth, which is last Friday, or just before the board meeting on Monday, and what came on Monday board packed meeting, um, showed differently. Um, and actually stripped Devil's Lake Valley City and Jamestown of their funding and provided more funding to Bismarck, Mandan, um, and others across the state, um, bigger school, bigger school districts. So I'm actually working with our legislators right now to see what changed between the first time the committee met and the second time the committee met. And our legislators are looking into it for us to, to see what's going on. But the CTE was supposed, the CTE committee or board was supposed to approve it yesterday and they tabled it due to some of the differences and recommendations that they saw.
Do you have one point two million match funding?
Uh, we have started some fundraising efforts, um, and we also have some additional, um, that's part of the survey is that, uh, we would ask that for with the, uh, referendum, um, if we were to go to that, to that point. Um, additionally, we do have some funds with ESR dollars, which is just like your guys' ARPA funds. Um, we have about six million dollars that we can dedicate to our facilities, um, for, you know, facility changes and needs, obviously. That's what we've identified as the biggest need right now. Um, and so we would have those funds to dedicate to that, um, if we needed to. Um, however, we'd like to look at the full picture of our district, not just one aspect of it, yeah. So yes, we would, just depending on what the, the survey says. So, good question. So we're looking at a lot of things, if you, if you can kind of, you know, and we're also, like I said, working with the hard part to help support in any way we can there, and again, with the county and the city, we'd love to continue to partner with you guys as well.
You will keep us informed on that A program, though, then, huh?
Oh, I will, yes, I will, yeah. Yeah, and I, until I hear concrete kind of decisions as far as what's going to happen, um, I don't want to get people's hopes up, you know what I mean?
No.
But I will definitely keep, I will definitely keep you in the loop. And I've talked to Jeff a couple times about it and, and we appreciate the support that some of you have written letters for and, and we appreciate the support for our grants, so.
How many are in the committee?
Uh, as far as which committee?
State committee?
Uh, oh, the state, uh, CTE board committee, I think there's ten of them, so, yeah.
Give me a list, will you?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah, yeah. Are you, do you want the board or do you want the committee that's making the decision on the grant?
Committee?
Committee?
Board.
Okay, all right.
The board.
I'll see if I can get you a list, so.
Yeah, we're pretty good.
Yep.
I'll set some details, too.
Yeah, I will do it.
Well, and we're, we're trying to, uh, to, obviously we've applied for this grant and put our, it was a, I think it was a forty-five page, uh, application that we put together with letters of recommendation and, and all those. And we were very hopeful about it and we saw the, the original list and we were very excited, but now it sounds like that might change.
I think it would be one thing in this community that would make people very excited to move forward with the facilities that we have.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Any other questions for me?
Is the referendum funded through a sales tax?
Uh, no, we can't as a school, we can't do it through sales tax. The only, the only way we can actually, the city is kind of, or the, the school is really locked in only the way we can raise taxes or, or get funds for facilities is really through our building fund, which is a mill levy of ten mills, or through a referendum, which is to property tax. That's the only way we can really, uh, raise those, uh, hit facility work done within our district. Which now we're receiving ESR funds, like I said, these, uh, these six million dollars are, uh, just like the ARPA funds, are never going to come, we're never going to get this opportunity again. Um, and so we're trying to take full advantage of it, like you guys spoke. You want to set something up long term, you want to start planning for the future and not just now, but, you know, you want it to be lasting. What better way than to last with a building that, or facilities that will last our kids and our school district years to come? Uh, we're trying to take full advantage of those dollars as best as we can by applying for those grants, by applying for, uh, different things. Again, the ESR funds are six million, if we get the, uh, grant, it would be one point two million. We also have seven hundred thousand dollars that we could allocate towards the facility, um, if it includes a fine art center, because there's a, there was a seven hundred thousand dollars that has been fundraised for a fine art center, if it does include a fine art center, then we can't use that seven hundred thousand dollars. Um, and I've also had conversations with other individuals that have said, if a fine art center does, is included, there'll be some additional funds that will come at that time as well. So we're trying to take full advantage of all the dollars that are coming our way, but now it's, uh, about putting all the puzzle pieces together and making sure it works.
Well, we appreciate the good work you're doing and hopefully it goes as smoothly as possible. It's a hard battle, but it's worth winning if you can, so.
Well, likewise, and thank you for the feedback, I appreciate that, because it's good for us to hear. We're, we're always trying to be as transparent and open as possible, um, and come to these meetings and get what's going on. So, thank you for the work you guys do as well, it's not an easy job, so.
I smell what you need.
All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Sean, go ahead.
My thought is pleasant, uh, I just got off the phone this morning with more ambulance service and we had talked about this before, but they have decided to close their doors. So that means that we have no ambulance service, we're the only one in Ramsey County. Uh, Munich is struggling, I talked to them two weeks ago and they will probably be full in as well. So we'll have ambulance services in Can Do, Park River, Lincoln, and then Devil's Lake. So we're looking at some, uh.
Satellite satellite service in order in Lake Region?
I just talked to the doctor in my board, but I just wanted to this morning, I was going up here real quick to tell you that. I would have to look at a few options. Um, there's a satellite service we cannot sustain as Lake Region ambulance service just because there's probably going to be fifty to seventy-five calls there a year and that's loud enough to snap, uh, it won't be paramedics without the EMTs, just because of the cost of it. But, uh, there's some other options to look at, uh, we'll probably go on later in April to that area. And then one of the possibilities is for us to man one of the stations for a while. Uh, we'll have to hire some EMTs just to make ends meet for a while, but. Just to let you know, I'd like to work with some of you because there's no more hospitals with us, a huge, huge area in between.
Basically, the city and the county, are they putting anything into this up there?
Yeah.
Sean, that, that's my initial thought, is why, why don't we, i- if you could spearhead this, we should probably get a meeting together of representatives, you know, representatives from Can Do, from Lincoln, from Catalier, from Towner, Ramsey, and Devil's Lake and sit down and talk about this, because this is one of. And sit down and talk about this, because this is one of those things that unfortunately is so critical and has been flying under the radar. You know, that, that it's become so sparse. And I think it would be good to start a, a multilateral dialogue about how do we ensure that services are covering our, our various communities.
And there is something in place already that's set up for, I say mill levies after. That was so nice, but, uh, if we set up a service, then whatever service that we provide for that area. That is covered under other counties as well. Right now, we receive money from Massacre County just a little bit. Because we provide services to Massacre County. Uh, Ramsey County is probably the only one that doesn't provide money, because we haven't asked for it. But, uh, if we set up an F more, we can ask for Cavalier County, we can ask for Towner County. All those counties that we provide services for have to put a beginning, so to speak.
But I think, but I think setting up a media with those, you know, oth- otherwise everybody's gonna be on a different page and it's gonna be very difficult. That, that to me would be the first step. Does, thought, uh, commission have any other thoughts on that, or am I?
Oh, you're on the right path. Gotta get people in the same room somehow.
Yeah.
Get them on the same page.
Well, we got the problem, continue, there are volunteers, I would assume.
Yep, they just have three quick.
Just, you know, the building to keep down and, you know, get some money to put that, keep that going and.
Yeah, I mean, at some point in time, the costs are just gonna have to be incurred differently because.
Right.
We relied on volunteers for so long and there's just nobody up there anymore comparatively to promise to be a volunteer.
Yeah.
But at the same time, they still need services, there's a bunch of farms up there and everything else and. Dangerous professions and forty five minutes back up and forty five minutes down is, that's an untenable situation.
I remember when I was on the make of board, this was an issue statewide, you know, smaller kind of place, and it's both in there.
Well, it's, you know, it's a multiple problem, either you're relying on volunteers, the, the regulations and stuff now, or, or, you know, it's just, and, and then. Ambulance services, you start from square one for dollars. So it's, it's tough. We gotta do something.
Sean, there's no ambulance service in Lainey at all?
There is a one Lainey, there is one, there's one Lainey, one Park River, one Rock Lake, Can do, Devil's Lake, Michigan.
And so hypothetically, the north end of the Ramsey County right now, though. I mean, you're forty, that, that more's forty five from Devil's Lake, twenty seven from Lainey, I mean. You're a bit thirty five, thirty, thirty five minutes to talking, probably roads in the winter times to get anywhere if something happens.
Yeah, today, though, divide up the, the territory a bit more. And we'll, we'll get in a big chunk of it, so. I'll, I'll rant a couple.
But I, but I still think it would be valuable to, to get people in the room together, see if we can't be a little more comprehensive, because again. I don't imagine that this, this folding of these smaller operations, I don't, I don't expect it to suddenly reverse and go the other way. And so it's probably worthwhile to do that, if you want my help about that, though, let's, let's talk again, I'll, I'll give you a call.
Do you have any questions? It's, it's, it's been good news this morning.
Thank you very much. Any other visitors and delegations? Going once, going twice? Alright, let's move on to portfolios and now we're going to Mr. Vol.
First one I got, like access, we did not meet this month, recorded in trader's office, I did not meet with them. We had a fair board meeting. Um, we're moving on with, uh, leasing, attack boat building, moving on with leasing on bids. We're meeting with grant writers, Ben Black was meeting with the writer, they'll get a possible grant. And move on to local support, to see what we can raise. And then I just have what they were, put out there for what the multipurpose building would be used for. Ice stock events, Ramsey County Achievement Days, the Cleaness of Therapy events, therapeutic writing, clean studies events. Writing lessons, F of A events, pet events, forage events, forage shooting, forage archery, Lake Region, Bullman Archery. ATV training, farm equipment, household auction, sales, ice stock auctions, axe throwing, snowmobile safety courses. Got your paintball Nerf fours, antique tractor shows. Hook offs for barbecue wrestling, football, softball. Um, your track, events that can be brought out there, good assets, RV boat shows, community entertainment. Worked at Little Theater, vendor shows, that's over, that type of activities, down the safety event. EMT police fire what they have, soil conservation district events, blood rights, art shows, benefits through the union members. CPR certification tours, motorcycle shows, weddings, funerals, North Dakota State University. Boat fishing shows, search and rescue training, the Devils Run, what events that, some of the events that they came up that we could use this for. So I'm hoping by the next meeting, we have an amount that we can, I could, they can present to the commission to see what kind of fund. And maybe ask from, from our, other than that, that's all I have. I just feel you guys are all up, uh, with what the use of the building and. The cost right now is right around that, you know, depending on what they can get from the grant. But they wanted to make sure they have a good process put together, what it's gonna be used for, so like, it's almost like an event.
Make sure they get it down block and way. Thank you.
Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Vol, Mr. Lightman.
Well, let's see, extension we got in this morning, highway's been here, state's attorney, so, I mean, portfolios in the court, health service taken care of. Library board, moving right along. Nothing too exciting there. Uh, social services, we met last month, uh, they're doing, I'm sure everyone's heard a little bit about the redesign of, uh. They're, they're folding health into human services at the state level, so they're redesigning things, so they're, they're kind of changing up how. The zones sit under that structure, still obviously state involved, but so they're, they have some new leadership that oversees the different flow charts and stuff, so we had some discussion on that and how. Uh, things are functioning essentially, uh, and it's kind of a way to see just because things are, are new and, and see how things work, but other than that, it's. Constant hiring issues, um, compression on salaries. It's been a constant battle where we've had multiple, uh, positions where they've offered. And, uh, people have thought, well, I want it, and then they see and then, oh, not enough money and there's no way to change it because of the state salary structure. So it's, uh, it's tough that way. But, uh, otherwise, you know, it's continuing to go, but, uh. You know, child protective services has been busy, 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 and it's always, always tough. But, uh, you know, they're operating okay. Uh, for Devil's Lake, uh, nothing too exciting there. We've had continuing discussions about, you know, how do we maybe possibly, uh. Try to go after some of these projects that are, are, uh. Are larger, you know, like the ones that went to Grant Forks or, you know, especially this one being crushing, things like that. Um, you know, it's, I think the discussion we've had here today has been all encompassing on just about everything you can look at in our community in terms of. How do you make, how do you keep a community vibrant, how do you make a community more vibrant, how do you attract people to a community? And we have that continual discussion here, and a lot of it comes down to schools, facilities. Opportunities, you know, how do you attract workforce when you've got a, a set workforce in a community? The first question that businesses ask before they come in, if they're a large business, are, what kind of workforce do you have? How easy can we get employees and are they skilled? And getting people to move into Devil's Lake if we're looking for skilled workforce, the first questions they ask are healthcare school system. That simple. Healthcare school system. And we have a quality school system, but if you, I, I hate to put it this way, but maybe we're on camera. When, when I, my son plays sixth grade basketball, we play traveling through it. Every school we go to is a better facility for our school system. Every school. Every last one, and I'm not faulting our school system, we've done a lot with what we have, but there are physical limitations. Things of that nature, I'm not advocating one side or the other, I'm just saying that, you know, when people come in from other places and they wanna move here, what are they looking for? They're general, they're generally young couples or they're looking possibly at some point to have a family, they're looking at the school system, they're looking at the healthcare eventually, maybe they're going to receive. And those are selling points to your community, whether it's a business coming in, whether it's an individual coming in, so. I think those discussions we're having at this level, uh, it, it's hopeful to me that we're starting to have those discussions as a community on how do we make ourselves a. A really vibrant place where people wanna move to and people wanna stay. Uh, but it's, it's gonna be a heavy lift and we have to continue to talk about it, but. That's some of the stuff we've been bouncing around over there too, you know, the, just that all, it's, it's, it's a lot different than I think it probably was fifteen or twenty years ago where you just tried to get a business. That's not how it works anymore, it's what do you have as a community to keep and attract people? Uh, and, and it's an all encompassing approach, and I think that Brad understands that and we've been having those discussions a lot. Lastly, I guess, uh, North Central Housing Authority, uh, I think things are running okay, the problem we've been running into is HUD is a pain in the butt. And I will say that on camera, because they are a pain in the butt. Uh, in terms of, uh. Funding and how you unlock your funding and all those things and all the reports, but Tim's trying to work through it. Uh, you know, you know, it's, it's just one thing after the other in terms of roadblocks, in terms of what they're asking for and what they're looking for and stuff like that. He's getting frustrated, understandably so, but we're working on it and, uh, hopefully we'll. Continue to move forward, but we have good staff, we, we're all staffed up over there, which is a positive thing. Uh, they're making progress, so. Uh, we'll continue to try to focus on, well, you know, affordable housing for the community, for the people that need it. We're working on there. Other than that, uh, that's all I have.
Mr. Fred?
Yeah, I don't have a whole lot, uh, you know, the airport authority continues to move forward with the. Spending the ARCA money that they received with the terminal expansion, the, um, with the airport. Making, uh. Making that, uh, more usable, user friendly, uh, airport facility. You know, we continue to have that five, six, seven, eight hundred. Passenger per month type of, of, uh, threshold landings, uh. We wanna expand that, continue to expand that, to the more we expand, the passengers out of Devil's Lake, the more federal funding will. Come down the, the bike, and that's kind of one of the things that we wanna try, try to strive for is. Is hitting those next thresholds in our.
You said ten thousand, and that's a huge threshold, right?
Well, I, I think the next one would be eight. If we hit the eight thousand, we, you know, bump up to, uh, seven hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, match, if we hit that ten thousand, we get a million dollar match, um, for federal funds. It, baby steps, you know, we wanna take those, those steps and keep moving, moving that forward, but, um. But they continue to move, move forward on that and, um. We're looking forward to advancements in, in the airport moving forward and, uh. You know, that'll continue forward, uh, Sheriff Nelson is here and, and things are. Steve, you have anything you wanna add, um, you know? Um, staffing wise, uh, jail wise, things like that, uh. They, it, it continues to be problematic, I think.
It does.
Yeah.
We. I have had my deputy school shifts in the jail because of short staff.
Yeah.
Um, we're having a problem, uh, we're not getting applicants, we're not getting. Uh, people that are there for a few days and gone, they don't like it, they. Uh, so it's, it's an issue, it really is. And we don't know the answer, uh, we've reached out to a few different places. There is somebody in Minot that, that I just got this yesterday, that has a bunch of people that, uh, their jobs were just eliminated. And I think those hand in hand with what Adam was saying earlier. Twenty bucks an hour, great, you know, that's what the LAC hires all, they don't wanna move to Devil's Lake. For Minot. They don't care, they'll just do without a job versus coming to move here and get a twenty dollar an hour job, what do you do? It's, it's a struggle, and we're continuing to push it. Uh, the, the captain that they hired starts today, he should be there today, you know? So ground zero will start over, they're gonna start moving forward and getting involved and going. Uh, so that's a positive thing. Uh, we're still doing okay, but we're not doing well. Uh, we're not doing where we should be, if you, if that makes sense. Uh, we make two steps forward, we take one step back. We are gaining a little bit, but we're not gaining much. And let's say it's, it's a lot of both down to staffing wise. Same thing in my department, I've had a position now for a month and a half, I haven't even had an application yet. For one position, for deputies, so, um, we're struggling.
Question on that, not specific to your position, but what, what's our starting wage on a deputy?
Uh, brand new, brand new, run the academy, no experience, is about forty thousand. Uh, Cavalier just put out a ad, they're looking for people, they're starting at fifty six. Yeah, but they've always, I, historically Cavalier County has had lots of money. They, and they probably have to pay more to get people to, same thing as it happened on the oil boom there, you know, all the way west, they were at, offering astronomical starting salaries. Cause they needed money. And that's kind of where we're at, uh. You know, if somebody's got experience, we start a little higher.
Why I ask, because I just saw Wells County, I think, but I went to, and I think they were forty five to forty seven or something.
The first, the last guy we started here in, what, uh, December, I think he started at forty two something. And he's brand new on the academy, no experience, we're gonna hire him for a while. But then again, you add in the benefit package of, of full healthcare for family plan, which is huge. Uh, a lot of other places have gone down to the state of mine. You know, they'll pay the single family, if you want family, you pay the extra out of your pocket. I mean, that's a huge benefit, and, and, and they don't realize that. You know, that, that's money out of your pocket that you're not having to pay because the counties pick it up for you. Well, that's a tough sale, but anyway, uh, twenty thousand. Yeah. And that's, you know, that's nothing you see, but it's, it's huge. Well, anyway, we're still continuing to break, we're doing what I. Uh, I'm on my way to Bismarck tomorrow, we're going, I'm going in front of the jail administrators board to push the. Um, CO basic school that we've been working on. So I'll let you, like I said, I got on the agenda for tomorrow to push them to get something going, so we have it a little easier for us to do. Our CO training, I also mentioned it to DOC R, uh, and, uh. Hope the mayor there and said, you're required of this, why aren't you helping us, so. We're.
What answer did you get?
He's gonna look into it.
Really?
He didn't tell me no.
They tell me that.
He kind of agreed, that, you know, I said, you're on the state requiring us, how come you can't, how come you weren't helping us? I mean, you were, you're required by you guys.
They used to.
They did, and that's, so anyway, I'm pushing buttons and I'm trying, and so we're, we're moving along on that front, but you know.
So, so Friday we will be hosting a meeting greet for new employees and new positions at the law enforcement center. I think, uh, eleven to one on Friday, we're having a meet and greet. Meeting, uh, new captain. Well, and there's some new positions, uh.
We may start a deputy director.
Deputy director, star is a deputy director, they're having the, enter the new nine one one coordinator and new nine one one lieutenant.
Which would be Sarah and Trish.
Yeah.
So been employees forever, so, you know, just changing the level.
Yeah.
But, but some of his duties have kind of changed to incorporate more of an oversight over the jail as well as dispatch, so.
Right.
With our meeting with DOC, she's kind of taking over some, uh, auditing functions which are greatly needed and, uh. Kind of put that in her responsibility, or that was the, so, it was a needed, needed thing to happen at this point.
Eleven to one on Friday at the LAC, if anybody's interested. I'm sure there will be donuts.
Probably more than donuts, I guess.
That's a good one, I think, I hate, we got people moving positions, it's a good reason to have a little.
We're, uh, probably looking at transporting a few more inmates, uh, to different locations, uh, here in the next week. But, uh, we'll take care of it.
Uh, Mr. Baki, what's the, uh, starting salary for a starting teacher?
Uh, forty two.
Forty two. Forty for a new deputy, um, housing continues to be a, an issue, um, yeah, so.
Yeah, well, housing is another thing, we talk about that every time, Devil's Lake all the time too, you know, how, how quali- quality single family homes and, and, you know, apartments are great too.
Uh, affordable.
Affordable, affordable's the main word.
Some of them are really expensive. Devils Lake real estate.